Certainly my pleasure and privilege to be here and address the council. We don't do it near enough. We're actually a little behind on making this presentation, so I'm gonna overload you with a couple of years' numbers and kinda give you an idea of where we're headed and what we're doing currently. But this is from fiscal year 2022, and as you can see, we handled a grand total of about 20,000 new cases. Nothing extraordinary. DUIs were down a little bit that year. Of course, they're picking back up. I don't think it was related to anything other than just good luck on people managing to sneak home at night instead of getting caught. 2023, the caseload was down just a little bit. Again, I should point out, in 2022, we had 17 appeals. Most of those were people that didn't want to go to jail when they were convicted of multiple second-time offenses. Most of those on appeal turned out in the city's favor. We wind up either they enter a plea agreement, go ahead and go to jail on their terms, or the city prosecutor works out some alternative plea. But as you can see, last year, there were only four appeals. One of those was a third-time DUI, I believe, and the other was a gentleman who was going to jail for a third theft charge. But this year, we're on point. This is through June 1st. This year, we're on pace to pretty much make the last year's numbers. The appeals are a little bit up, but again, the appeal is a fourth-time DUI, I think. He's got another one pending in Chambers County, so he's just trying to kick the can down the road till he can figure out what he's gonna do with the rest of his life. And the five misdemeanors are all dog cases, which we don't have enough time tonight for me to discuss how much a dog case is worse than a capital murder case in the city of Auburn. But we have folks that come in there and fight tooth and nail over whether their dog was off the leash, or dog was urinating in the neighbor's yards. And people really take those worse than any kind of case you can think of. It's more personal to them than if it was a domestic violence case. And the gentleman that was found guilty on those decided that he just was gonna take his chance at the county. I don't think it's gonna do him any good, but he's gonna go over there and spend some time and resources fighting it. This is where I hopefully don't hurt myself patting us on the back, but these numbers are from the statewide administrative office courts numbers for 2022. And what I've compiled here is the Big Ten. As y'all know, the 10 largest cities in the state of Alabama by population. This is the number of cases handled, the revenue collected, and their total judicial budget. And as you can see, we're the seventh-largest city in the state. We, in 2022, handled the fourth-largest number of cases and had the fourth-largest revenue collected. I will point you to Mobile, the pointer doesn't work, but I think that $284 million that Mobile collected is probably a typographical error that they submitted to the state. So I think we were really third in collections. But we all did that with the smallest budget of the Big Ten. And carrying over into this past fiscal year, again, we were seventh. We had the fifth-highest caseload, fourth in revenue, and again, the smallest budget. I'll again note that Birmingham claims they handled 68,000 cases this year, and they only handled 20 last year, so I think that might be a little bit of a typographical error. But we pride ourselves on getting the job done with a efficient staff. We try and leverage technology and other things to make sure that we're doing the best job we can efficiently and effectively. The initiatives that we undertook in '22 and '23, I think we talked last time I was here about the UpTrust computer system. Basically, that allows us to utilize text messages to remind citizens of their court dates and payment dates, things of that nature. We finally got it completely installed. We're now working on making sure when we contact citizens, we get good phone numbers so we can keep building that database. But even this morning, I had some gentleman tell me that he got a text message. He'd have missed his court date if he didn't get it. So it is working. It's helping us reduce the number of failure-to-appear warrants we issue, and it's helping citizens get through the court system, which is our goal. We're also currently working on some initiatives with mental health issues. One of my staff members attended a two-day seminar on how to deal with people and recognizing and dealing with mental health issues. I think that's probably the biggest problem we have in the court system now, is people that have those issues, being able to identify them and getting them help rather than putting them in the county jail where it doesn't do them any good. It costs us money, and it doesn't help the citizen because it's not addressing the reason they committed the crime. So the short answer is, we need a statewide law that allows us to have them referred to a mental health professional once the officers on the street determine there's a problem. We don't have that law. I don't know if there's any plans to start one of those, but Florida's got one, and I think it works pretty well in the state of Florida for them to address the situation, determine there's a mental health issue going on, and then get them some immediate help rather than keeping them in the county jail.
So right now, when you address the issue of mental health issues, so what's the procedure now?
Well, I don't have any input when they're out on the street and the officers contact them. But once they get to me and I determine that we, or somebody helps me determine that we think there's a mental health issue, if they're remaining in the county jail, we have the psychologists, psychiatrists at the county jail go ahead and evaluate them, figure out if there's an ongoing history of mental illness, or if this is something new. We try and get a diagnosis, and we try and get them set up when they are released to get on a treatment plan so we don't have to see them again for the same type issues. Unfortunately, if, you know, they have an issue, they get to the county jail, they post bond, and they release them, there's not much I can do once they're out of the county jail. We can talk to them when they come to court and try and convince them to get some help, and we have some resources that we try and pass along. And a lot of times, if they have to go to, if it's a drug or alcohol charge and they have to do counseling, we try and add in some sort of mental health counseling aspect to try and help them over that issue. And again, any questions, please interrupt me. This year, we have been working for the last year probably to begin an in-house court referral program. There's the Mandatory Treatment Act of 1990, which says if I find you guilty or you plead guilty to a drug or alcohol charge, I have to send you to a counseling program to complete. Not my choice. It's statewide. It's state-mandated. So in the past, we've been sending these citizens over to the court referral office at the county, and in recent history, we've determined we're about 50% of the countywide caseload. And their manpower only allows them to have a person on site here at the court one day a week. And so I've found having court three days a week, we need more help. We've got people that walk in, and they need to go ahead and get back in counseling and see the court referral officer, and we don't have that resource. So we have taken steps to get started. We're interviewing, and hopefully by August, September, we're gonna have the groundwork in place to start a court referral program on October 1st. And again, we'll have to talk about that in budget meetings. I may be wasting my time, but we hope not. But I think it's a benefit to the citizens. We have help on site. They don't have, we've got a lot of people, transportation issues. It's hard for them to get to Opelika, you know, three times a week to do counseling and do things like that. So our goal is to try and benefit the citizens. And then briefly, these are the community service numbers for the last three years. As you know, one of the things we've instituted recently is if folks can't pay their fines and court costs, we try and give them an opportunity to do community service to get out from under that and also benefits community. But I won't bore you, but each of these years, we've had somewhere in the neighborhood of 12,000 to 13,000 hours of community service. A majority of it is done with the Environmental Services Department. Each year, I think that equates to four or five full-time employees. If we had to hire them, they're out there picking up trash for the city. That's a good benefit. And then they also do 2,000 or 3,000 hours at other, there's a Curtis House in Opelika, and there's several other charities around town that benefit greatly from our community service program. And that's basically it.
Judge, do the municipal judges have in the state, do y'all talk, do y'all meet, do y'all have an organized group? And what I'm getting to is if y'all started letting our legislators know that this assistance in mental health is something that y'all are really asking for and need some help on.
Every chance we get. I've talked to several, I'm on a committee in Montgomery that meets every quarter, and we've talked with a couple of other judges on that committee about it. And anytime we go to education seminars, it's discussed. It's just, it's difficult. There's a million things legislators are working on down there every time they meet, and this is something that's just a big problem, and it's not easy to chop up and digest and get a solution. But every chance I get, I'm pushing forward, and, you know, it's not a secret, we've got several people that stay downtown and constantly are harassing people on Tumors Corner or sleeping out here on the sidewalk, and they have mental health issues. And I'm not gonna call any names because I don't want to go to jail for HIPAA violations, but that's what we're trying to avoid. We're trying to avoid people that otherwise don't have any criminal histories or criminal problems from continuing to get in trouble because they don't treat their mental illness. Does that make sense?
Yep. Any questions for Judge?
Yes, Judge. Is there something that we can do as a city in terms of a resolution in support of enacting this legislation, or something as the council can, you know, send a message or a letter or whatnot to our representatives?
I'm sure anything like that would help. When I talk to them next, I'll ask if that would be beneficial, if they would like something in writing. I think they understand that it's an important situation, and it's just getting in front of them and moving forward with it.
Will the new psychiatric facility that East Alabama is building, will that provide resources that could be used for this?
I think it will. I'm not 100% up to speed on what they're going to do, but that is one of the problems with the existing situation is it doesn't take a rocket scientist to diagnose some of the, now, some of them are, but there's a lot of them, you can walk up and know that there's an issue going on. The issue then becomes, where are you gonna take them? You've gotta have a licensed professional, and our officers are great, but they're not licensed professionals. You gotta have a licensed professional figure out that that is the issue, and then you've gotta have somewhere to put them. And right now, there's just not a lot of facility beds available and not a lot of on-call professionals to do that. So it'll help definitely, I believe.
So do you get a lot of situations like that?
Not really. One, probably why I say not really, to me, it's not a lot, but one a month, probably. A lot of them are the same people over and over again, and we, these folks, we know they're laboring under that, and they're medicated, and they choose not to take their medication, and they wind up back talking to me again, and we do everything we can to get them back on a treatment path so they don't have to sit in the county jail.
Any questions? Judge, thank you for what you and your staff do. Thank y'all for being efficient and effective, and we appreciate it, how you represent our community and the hard work you do and the hard decisions you make. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. It's my pleasure.
Yes, sir. I want to use this time really quickly to let the community know where the update is on Auburn 2040 next week. Myself and the city manager and the mayor pro temp will be meeting with the team captains and starting to talk to them about what their group will be doing, what their team will be doing. The goal is to meet with all the teams next week, and then our hope and our objective is to get started sometime in mid-July. Mayor pro temp, Whitton, and I will take the list. We've gotten about 190, I believe, applicants to participate in 2040, and we'll start working with that this week in trying to put those teams together. But I appreciate the enthusiasm of our community for all those people that have participated, and we appreciate the team captains being willing to provide leadership for this, and we look forward to getting 2040 started, and we believe the third time is the charm. So we're looking forward to that. I did want to ask the city council, at the last planning commission meeting, the planning commission, there was an update to the Bridlewood subdivision where they added four additional lots to that subdivision. That will impact the development agreement related to Bridlewood that the city council approved months back. And going through our process and how we bring things forward, I would ask the city council to allow this to be on an upcoming agenda of the committee of the whole. I'm not necessarily saying that would be on July the 2nd, but sometime in the very near future, just to talk about the addition of those four lots and updating that development agreement. City manager, you helped quantify this, but it's, we have to get that development agreement updated, correct?
That's at the pleasure of the council. If it is not updated and they proceed with final plat with four additional lots, the development agreement will be null and void as it stands today and eliminated. So they cannot change lot configurations without modifying the development agreement or it voids the agreement for both the Creekwood subdivision as well as the developers of Rockhouse Farms.
Yeah, Rockhouse Farms. I said Bridlewood. Rockhouse Farms, thank you for that correction. So if the council's okay with that, we'll put that on a committee of the whole meeting sometime in the near future, and I can let y'all know exactly which one we'll do that for. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay with that? Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
When you say team captains, who are the team captains?
I don't have that list with me. I would say that we kept most of them from the original team captains, but we've had, we did lose a few through life and just job changes, and so we've had a couple of new additions. But I can get you that list tomorrow. I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't bring, I should have brought that with me tonight.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you, Connie. Okay. All right. Any questions on tonight's agenda for the city manager? Ms. Grouch, anything for us?
I have nothing.
Okay. Is there a move to adjourn the committee of the whole?
To move.
All right. We have adjourned the city committee of the whole, and we'll move right into Auburn City Council meeting. I'll call it a order tonight's Auburn City Council meeting for June 18, 2024. We appreciate and welcome everybody that is with us in person tonight. Welcome those that are listening to WA&amp;I and that are watching through our streaming services. Thank all of you for being here. Lindsay, with the roll call.
Adams.
Here.
Coblenz.
Here.
Dawson.
Here.
Rizwell.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Whitton.
Here.
Here. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for
Please be seated. Earlier tonight during the committee of the whole, we received a report from Judge Jim McLaughlin from the Auburn Municipal Court, and we appreciate him taking time to provide that report. I had a couple of announcements related to Auburn 2040, and I've asked the council to allow some time during the committee of the whole to discuss amending the development agreement for the Stonehouse subdivision.
Rockhouse.
Rockhouse. Thank you. Apologize on that, Rockhouse. Under mayor's announcements tonight, I just want to, I forgot to say this last time, I hope all the dads in here in our community had a great Father's Day. I want to say thank you to local Habitat Humanity and the Daughters of American Revolution. They presented a flag to the McCurdy family, who recently moved into a new Habitat house and had a nice ceremony last week, and I appreciate DAR's reminder of the flag and what it means to our country, and I appreciate Habitat and their continued great work serving citizens in our community by providing them places to live, and they're participating in the building of those houses. I want to thank all the folks from Leadership Lee County. Myself and the city manager had a chance to address this year's class last week, and I appreciate just their investment in wanting to learn more about all the mechanisms that make Lee County a special place to live, and just thank them for the sacrifices they make to participate in that program. Certainly thank all the people within the city, all the departments that made the Summer Art Walk possible a couple of weeks ago. It was a beautiful night, and as big a crowd as I've ever seen at the Summer Art Walk, and it seemed to be a great time had by all, and the band was great, and it was just a lot of fun. I want to say thank you to Auburn University President Chris Roberts for inviting me to address the Auburn University Board of Trustees last week. It was a great opportunity to tell the story of what's going on in our community, to the leadership of Auburn University, our largest employer. It was a time also to share about all the great partnerships the city of Auburn and Auburn University collaborate on to make all the area that we live in a much better place to live, and I appreciate their welcome attitude to that, and they have asked that we do this on an annual basis. So we'll be putting together a report for the Board of Trustees each year, and I appreciate them doing that. And I want to say congratulations to Davis Thompson, young man that grew up in this community, went to another school to play college golf, but he did finish in the top 10 in the U.S. Open, and so we're very proud of Davis, and congratulations to he and his wife, Holly Grace, who are both Auburn kids that grew up here in this community on Davis' accomplishments. Anyone else have an announcement they'd like to make?
Yes, I would like to.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to thank everybody that took part in the Juneteenth event and the parade, and I also want to send a special shout-out to the Auburn Police Department. Your guys actually led the parade on motorcycles, and they did a wonderful job. They joined the entertainment, and I don't know if some of y'all on Facebook or not, but some of the officers was out there dancing and doing the boogaloo. But it was a great event, and thanks to Parks and Recreation for allowing us to use Keesewalk Park. And I just want to thank everybody who actually contributed to the Juneteenth. It was another successful event. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Connie.
And thank you for the proclamation and for Bob coming out, and we just really had a good time, and I hope y'all enjoyed the speaker.
She has some powerful words, for sure. Okay. Anyone else? Counsel having an announcement? Yes, sir.
This may be right up there with watching paint dry, but I've noticed that the streets are getting striped, and I believe we're right in the middle of about a 30-day period when the striping will occur on city streets, if I'm not mistaken on that. It should run until about the end of June.
We will stripe as the striping companies are in town. Different sections get done, but I can say that as long as we're resurfacing, we're striping.
Well, it looks great, and I appreciate the work, whoever it is.
Well, I appreciate that, and there are, there's two contracts, and one is for striping, and sometimes they will re-stripe places that are not being resurfaced, so you'll see that. But as I've mentioned before, and a lot of our longstanding council members have dealt with, we have very few striping companies. Now, we do have another one that's a little more localized, but sometimes we don't even know that they're coming, and they come into town and start striping, so we're just appreciative when it gets done. We've had some citizens concerned about Opelika Road being one of those sections Councilman Adams has dealt with, where in his ward where some citizens are concerned at night where they can't see very well, so we're trying to get all that corrected.
I got, can I?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Okay. I just want to ask a question. Is there any updates on the lights on Martin Luther King, you know, the ones that was knocked down?
I do not have an update. They've not come in or they would be installed. It's a supply issue, and they come in, as soon as they get here, we will arrange an installation.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. We'll move ahead with Auburn University Communications.
Good evening. If we haven't met yet, my name is Evelyn Cherry. I grew up in Auburn, and I now attend Auburn University, and I am serving as one of the Directors of City Relations this next year for Auburn's SGA. And this is my first report. So as everyone knows, Camporegale is still going on. They finished up their sixth session today, so if you're on campus or around campus in downtown, just continue to be happy faces and sweet to all the incoming students. And then Auburn's first mini semester is wrapping up this week, so finals are at the end of this week, and then the second mini semester of the summer starts next week. So there will be kind of an exchange of students coming for the second semester, mini semester, and then leaving for the first mini semester. And then this just a reminder that the market at Ag Heritage Park is ongoing all summer from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. every single Thursday at the Red Barn or the Ag Heritage Park, and this is a great opportunity to purchase goods from the Auburn community and surrounding areas. That's all for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Evelyn. Glad to have you. All right. This time is citizens communications on items on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to address the council specifically about an item that is upcoming on our agenda, now would be the time to come forward. We'd ask that you come forward to the lectern and provide us your name and address for the record. There are a couple items, one item in particular that has a public hearing. If you'd like to talk about that, we'd ask that you wait for the public hearing. Anyone? Okay. We'll move forward with city manager's communications.
Under city manager's communications this evening, I have the announcement of one vacancy on the Green Space Advisory Board for a term that begins August 8th and ends August 7th, 2028. The appointment will be made at the July 16 meeting. You ready for the consent agenda?
Please.
Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Go ahead. Mr. Mormon?
Items 8 Delta 2 and 8 Delta 4.
Anyone else? Okay. 8D2.
Item 8D2 authorizes the payment of $72,355 to DNJ Enterprises Incorporated for the emergency repair of a storm sewer sinkhole on West Glen Avenue.
May for approval.
I have a motion in a second. Mr. Mormon?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I just wondered how bad this sinkhole was and how long it took to fix it.
Well, I'll say this is, you know, very late afternoon, we got a call, one of our employees noticed a little bit of a sag in the road, and by the time we got out there, the hole started forming. And so I can have our technical folks explain a little bit more, but this is an old Alabama Department of Transportation right-of-way, and West Glen Avenue is kind of in the vicinity of the Waffle House. Waffle House has nothing to do with it, neither did any construction in the area, I want to be very clear, nor tall buildings. These are old stormwater pipes that sit under a very old road that we inherited, and sometimes we don't know what's under the road that we inherited and was built many years ago. And we had a problem with stormwater getting outside of the pipe, and it, for lack of a better term, you know, eroded under the road, and the hole started opening. It probably was, what, five feet or larger within several hours?
At least.
Yeah. It was moving quickly. So DNJ Enterprises, as they always do, when we call them, they were down the road. They were there in a matter of minutes, and we started working on a plan together. We had a little bit of rain at this time, or a lot of rain, which slowed us down slightly. The problem was analyzed, we blocked kind of the area for overnight, and then began working in the rain the next day. How many total days were we closed?
About a week.
It was about a week, but it was some full closure and then some lane closures on West Glen. This is the second time we've had one in this vicinity, and what we plan to do and we are in the process of is we are putting a camera in all the storm pipe we know about in that vicinity to try to locate if there could be any further problems. Again, due to aging infrastructure and things that we don't necessarily know, some of which we don't know exists under the road there due to how old it is, that's what we're doing to try to avoid this in the future. But I really commend our staff member who was on their way back to their office and noticed there's a problem. We don't, if you see a depression in a road and you've not seen it before, call it in, put it in, fix it. Let us know, because sometimes these things happen, and we don't know. But I really commend our entire staff and DNJ Enterprises for immediately mobilizing, and it was a lot of people, and I know sometimes we look like, how many people can stand around a gigantic hole in the road and talk about it? But what we were trying to figure out as it was growing, where was the problem? How could we isolate it, and how could we get it repaired as quickly as possible? And the best news of all is nobody was hurt in the process and no damage to other property vehicles or people, and that's, the people are what matters.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Kelly.
Was this an active water line, one that we are using?
A storm sewer line, stormwater line.
But it is, it's one that's part of our overall storm collection.
It was one that was collecting water and trying to pass water through it, yes.
All right, thanks. Certainly I want to echo what the city manager said. Thank you to all the staff that stopped what they're doing to get out there and handle this emergency, and thank you to DNJ for sending a crew out there immediately. It's important. All right. Anyone else? We've got a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 8D4 authorizes a three-year subscription renewal with Granicus LLC for Auburn Fixit in the total amount of $46,648.20.
May for approval.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Mr. Mormon?
Yes, sir. Thank you again.[1786.03] Yes, sir, thank you again. Besides a subscription renewal for the Fixit app, I think I understand that this app is being upgraded, at least in part.
The app is not, itself is not being upgraded. We're always refining internal processes, which is what we're doing with our Director of City Relations, Allison Blankenship, as well as our people in our Information Technology Department, G.I.S., where sometimes some citizens feel that they put things in here and, and they haven't gotten an adequate response, and what we've learned is our staff is often taking care of it, but they'll forget to type something called "public colon" in there. We're trying, we're doing some quality control where we're double-checking some things, and we're correcting some things to make it easier on the staff that, that responds to all of these, to, to make sure it's getting to our end user as quickly as possible. So that's just some internal refinement versus the actual functionality of the app itself.
I commend him for that.
Any other comments or questions? We have a motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda? So move.
Second.
Motion second. Any further questions? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consent agenda carries forth. Ordinances.
Under ordinances this evening, item 9A is a request from Sharon Stitch to annex approximately 4.95 acres of property located at 2042 Bonnie Glenn Road. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its June 13th meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
I have a motion seconds. Anyone in the council having a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing and hearing none. Any questions or comments?
Just, just one, a quick comment. I, I see that the applicant has stated that the intended use will remain single-family attack, I guess detached dwellings, single-family dwellings. Are there any plans to develop this, or that we know of at this point?
I'll have the planning director answer that question.
Thank you. Yeah, that's a, that is a great question. I guess this is, we see a lot of variations, just kind of plans for this lot, and I think just kind of for things kind of off of Bonnie Glenn, just, I think, just with this lot particularly. So if there are, like I said, I mean, they, they change so frequently, so I can't really say if there are any firm or committed to plans at this moment, but we see a lot of variations. I mean, just in the time that I've been with the city, so.
Now, I'll remind you, as you annex this, this comes in as rural, not a different zone that, so right now it would be three-acre lot minimum.
So there could only be one lot? Because it, it, could it be two lots, I guess? I don't think so.
No.
No, no.
I'm looking at him to make sure from an existing structure standpoint, but unless there were two parcels there already, which there are not, it's just one. That's not to say that you won't see a rezoning, but right now the only application before use annexation.
Anyone else? Okay, Lindsey, roll call.
Adams?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Yes.
Item 9B1 is a request to rezone approximately 65.28 acres of property located at the southern extension of MEMS Trail subdivision from rural to development district housing. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this request by a vote of eight to zero with one abstention at its May 9th meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary, and a public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
I have a motion seconds. Anyone in the council having a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing and hearing none, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the City Council regarding this topic, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you will have five minutes to speak to the council. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from the council?
I have a question.
Please.
So on this one, 65 acres, it's 100 and approximately 57 units. I noticed the road cut going out to Old Mill Road, I believe, in the site plan. Just the condition of Old Mill Road, well, I don't know if a traffic study will address the condition of that road, but is it capable of handling that kind of traffic that we anticipate coming out of these units?
If this is all adopted, I know a traffic study is required, and I'll have the city engineer address if it's going to look at. When you mean conditions, Councilman Kovalins, do you mean it's width? Do you mean potholes? What do you mean?
Yeah, just overall condition. It's, my, my experience is kind of a narrower, smaller road, handling this volume of traffic. I know some of it will have to go out through probably the existing road network there, but I do have concerns about the traffic flow on Old Mill Road.
Yes, as part of the development, if you approve the rezoning and they submit a development plan, they will have to do a traffic impact study. So we'll be able to look at Mill Creek Road, look at impacts to the road itself, the capacity as well as the intersections that are affected.
Okay.
And I think it's also fair to say there are subdivisions across Old Mill Road that have also been asked as part of their development to look at certain things as well along the way.
Okay. Secondly, I know there's a pump station that was, that was put in and out here many years ago to handle, and it's capable of handling this volume of houses since the land use plan indicated rural, I guess we have enough capacity to handle what we need to with addition of these houses.
Our Assistant Water Resource Management Director, Matt Dunn, is here, and I'll have him speak to that. Matt, if you could just get to a microphone, that would be helpful.
Yeah, there, there is a lift station out there, and it is capable of handling the additional sewer lift.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all I have.
Okay, yeah, Sam?
Thank you, sir. There was quite a lively discussion on the, the Planning Commission on 9 May about sewer, and I think that, as you two gentlemen have pointed out, the sewer is, is capable of, the sewer treatment plan is capable of handling, and the sewer system is capable of handling these additional housing units. But I just wondered about the rest of the city services in that regard, trash and fire and police and animal control and water itself. Will, will these city services be adequate? Will it be too much, too much pressure on these city services?
Were there any discussion of that at the Planning Commission meeting, or you want me to?
No.
No, okay. Ultimately, I mean, these are things that are up to you. It's not something I was prepared to speak to tonight relative to this agenda item. Back to the land use plan, we do plan accordingly with what a land use plan says and indicates, and, and as I've received some questions, this is outside of the current land use plan, this, this request, but you see that density in here is relatively low, because you've got, a good bit of this property is also not buildable, so that makes it 2.4 units an acre. However, you'll be looking at a new land use plan coming up, or revisions to the future land use plan that are going to recommend this area to be one-acre lot minimums. So this is a little bit outside of that. At the end of the day, we have to provide services where property, you know, is zoned accordingly, and so it's something that we can pivot to. A lot of that depends on timing and so on, and we'll address this, and this can make it more challenging to take on other areas. I think the, the bigger goal is this is a budding and existing subdivision, you know, that we're already providing services to this area. We're not going eight miles in a direction we're not currently going and providing services. We're already in these areas, and so I can't say that it's more challenging. It's something, if you prove this, we will plan for it accordingly. And as we know the developer's schedule, that's what we will plan for. But when you jump in an area where we're not providing a lot of these services, and it's extremely rural and low density in that entire area, that's, that's a bigger challenge for us. But when we can meet, if that's what the council wants to do.
Any other questions?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. You raised the issue of the land use designation, and I think that was a sticking point with the staff, and why they did not recommend going forward with this. Can you explain, is this like closing the barn door after the horse is gone? If we look at the land use plan and then say, we'll change the plan based on the action that we're taking tonight, it just, what effect would it have at a later date on what we're doing tonight?
And so that's a multi-layered question, but I'll have our planning director start, and then I'll bring it up if I need to.
Yeah, so, so it's in the land use updates that City Manager mentioned. So there's several places, I guess the bulk majority of the updates are corrections, and so there's some growth changes, auto boundary changes, et cetera, but the vast majority of that are corrections, and corrections represent the development pattern that has taken place, and then having the future land use plan match that. And so I guess kind of like how we address some of those changes where some had deviated from it, then we correct it kind of down the line. I guess kind of the implications of that, I think just kind of from a population standpoint, or I think from a growth standpoint, I think the recommendation is much more reflective of we no longer have to rely on these mechanisms to grow. I mean, like without upzoning anything, annexing anything, Auburn is still growing at about a 2,200, 2,500 person a clip a year, kind of for the next foreseeable future. Like I said, I mean, that's without annexing anything, upzoning anything, and so it's really, the recommendation was really just, and not to that, and like the land use plan, that we are, we've kind of transitioned to a little more sophisticated model around growth, just kind of thinking about where growth makes sense, where we want to have those services, where we have services, and then where can we efficiently deliver those services? And so-
Well, and real quick, you, you're recommending limited residential here because?
Yes, yes, yes. And so, yeah, and so we're recommending limited residential because in this spotlight, like we said, like majority of the property is unbuildable. Like I said, we already, we don't have a lot of density out there to begin with, and I know it kind of came up at the Planning Commission meeting that this was urban, and I think like the surrounding densities are two, some are getting up to three. That's not urban. That is firmly suburban, firmly rural in some areas, and like we were saying, I mean, just kind of stretching that out, just, like I said, we don't have to do that to grow. And so it wasn't, not necessarily saying or trying to police or kind of inform anything. It's really just, we don't have to rely on that mechanism to grow anymore as a community if we don't want to. So that's just kind of what the land use plan is stating.
Got it. Okay. Yes, sir, Mr. Griswold.
Yes, so we've been asked to rezone this from rural to DDH. All right, now, in the write-up here, the staff has proposed changing the future land use from rural to limited residential. And you just mentioned just now that that is a staff recommendation to go to limited residential. So is it appropriate for us to be looking at changing to DDH when we may want to be changing it to limited residential?
So limited residential is a land use designation. L-R-D would be the appropriate zone, and the applicant is not requesting that. So one of your challenges is you need to vote up or down what the applicant's request is, which is applicants have the right to ask for whichever base zoning they want. And so you could, when we do zoning map updates, not just referring to this project, you have the rights to change zoning in land use, or in zoning map changes, but a lot of that does need to come with some science. We can't spot zone, we can't do some other things. Has to come a little bit with data behind it. But in this instance, this is what the applicant is requesting to bring forward the plan that they would like to implement.
What is the density discrepancy between a DDH and an LRD?
So DDH goes up to five dolarians an acre, and then LRD is one, is one dolarian an acre. And I guess like normally, L-R-D is used as like a transitionary zone to kind of go from that suburban to that rural, which is one dolarian every three acres. And so just kind of as you work your way down Shelton Road, kind of out to Sand Hill and everything, you're getting into the much more rural subdivisions. I mean, we have like a lot of conservation overlay districts out there, and like I said, I mean, even those that are clustered, I mean, they're still kind of at the density of one dolarian every three acres. And so we use the limited residential as a transitionary zone to that.
But the proposed dwelling per acre is 2.4, which based off of our map and our upcoming agenda item of PDD request is equal to or greatly reduced from what is already developed in that entire area.
Yep, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct, and I think some of the dilemma for the council is you have to transition somewhere, and we can make recommendations, but ultimately that rests in your hands. And I would say from a services standpoint, you've heard me harp on this about some other areas, and that's why I said when we're not providing services in an area of town to any type of density, a much bigger challenge than when we are already providing services in a specific area where existing similar densities exist, meaning, you know, we're not then, for Katrina's team and Environmental Services, they're already running routes in that area. Yes, eventually we have to add people and equipment to service all of this, but it's not a ton of new routes. It's expected. So this becomes a very gray area in terms of, and this is where the elected officials get to decide, so you're welcome.
Follow-on question. So the staff would prefer a limited residential land use. If, if that winds up being where we go with this, is this development still too dense for that? Because it, it says out there, still would not align with the designation, although there would be less of a discrepancy. So even if we change it to L, what is it, L-R, limited residential use, this development still exceeds what you recommend?
Yes, and so the, and so the difference in what they allowed housing units, the units proposed, I think it's like 157, and I think what the, what that would allow, I think on kind of what's buildable, not on just kind of the total acreage, would be about 120. And so I, I think kind of, and also staff is looking at the entire picture, and so we're not just kind of looking at these developments, or just kind of 120 coming in here, or 150 coming in here. Like we see the entire picture and kind of what that equals to. Like I was saying, kind of how we're growing at that 2,200 to 2,500 a year, and then kind of looking at the buildable lots that already exist, of the number of 7,200 that's in other PDDs, and then just kind of looking at the lots that are coming in as they go, in places where we haven't planned for them. Just doing the math in certain areas, I mean, these are political decisions that can equal a much greater number than kind of what we're already looking at. Like I said, I mean, that's the growth that puts us on a trajectory to hit, you know, like that 92 to like 100,000, you know, like, like by 2030. And so that's, that's just what we're looking at. It's a perspective of the entire picture, not just these singular developments.
But does staff still stand behind their recommendation for denial?
Yes.
Okay.
But the Planning Commission recommendation was for approval eight to zero with one abstention?
Yep, correct. Correct.
And, and again, that decision, these are recommendations based on, on the current land use plan, and you got a preview of what the future land use plan is. So if you decide that you agree with the Planning Commission, because we have yet to adopt the newest version of the future land use plan, this would be adjusted at that time. As, as Plan Director talked about corrections, you know, this is, this is up to you ultimately. The recommendation is a pure planning exercise, trying to stick with that, and yes, the preference is usually you do stay with the land use plan. This area is, you've got rural things adjacent to it, you've got density in certain areas, and this is why it falls a little bit gray for the City Council, is that you've got a whole bunch of things going on in this area. So best planning principles is what the staff is recommending. However, Planning Commission obviously went in a different direction unanimously, and they recommend to you, and you're the final authority.
And I asked you this question earlier today, just for the benefit of everybody. When do we anticipate a new future land use plan being developed and presented to the council for approval?
So the Planning Commission's already seen that, and there's been some tweaks made. We will next schedule, you're about to get an email from me about probably nearing five or six work sessions that need to take place this summer. But that has, have to do with budget, land use plan, joint session with the school board, all kinds of things. And so one of the ones that we've got to get scheduled in a smattering of dates is I, you'll hear from me this week on this, is a joint session with the Planning Commission, where you're going to get your first look at where all of that stands. We introduced you early in the process. Now, most of the work has been done. It's presented to you for information and dialogue with the Planning Commission. Then it will formally go to the Planning Commission. No changes would be made at that time for adoption and, and recommendation to you of approval of whatever they decide that is, and then you will see it on your agenda. So I don't know timeframe-wise if we're looking at August or September, but probably around there for beginning to get approvals through the appropriate bodies.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, Sam. I just wanted to clear up something I think I heard, that limited residential would allow for 120 by rough math, but I think it's more like 65. for 120 by rough math, but I think it's more like 65.
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry, yeah, so the difference between what limited residential would allow and what the proposed development would allow is roughly 120, like I said, so because majority of that, like, not majority of the 65, but a large portion of the 65 acres actually isn't buildable because of the grade and the slope on it, it's something that that's mentioned in the report, so I think if you'd be able to get one, you'd be able to get about 65 one acre lots, but a lot of that wouldn't be buildable, so you'd really only be able to get about 40, maybe 30 or so in there.
So, yeah, due to topography and so on, if you go with the limited residential, yes, it would lower tremendously the amount, because density has to be lower, and you can't make a lot smaller than one acre unless you do a conservation overlay, which I'm not sure this is in that district. It's not, okay.
Scribbling furiously here, but I think that it's a house for every quarter of an acre or so, maybe a little more than a quarter of an acre.
You have an excellent question, and Councilman Koblins had asked me this earlier in the week, you spread density over the entirety of the parcel, so even though some of this isn't buildable, as defined in the zoning ordinance, it's divided by the acreage in which it sits, so yes, for unbuildable property, we don't deduct for that. We do an open space if you're trying to count swimming pools and things, but that's different. For density, it's a pure calculation of the number of dwelling units across the property, so that's, and the acreage, that's why that calculates that way.
Max.
I just want to say, you know, this is really, looks to me like a final phase of Mem's Trail, and asking us to bring this into that PDD, it's matching the overall density that we have in Mem's Trail already, we're not asking to go more dense, I know, I realize that, you know, what the zoning ordinance says, so overall, I respect what the staff has to say, and I don't disagree, I know we have to have an area where we get to a less dense as we get out, I certainly understand that, but it makes sense to me based on where it is and adjacent to the neighborhood that it is, to match the existing density, finish out what's there, and look to spread that density out on the other areas, and I think there's some natural areas here with rivers and ravines and whatever, I've not walked the property, that it makes more sense to me that you would spread that density out as you get further out because of the natural barriers that are in place, so overall, because of its matching, it's not going into anything else, I do support it, I think it's fine with what's there, and I do support what, it being kind of a final part of Mem's Trail from what I can gather, what I can see.
And if I may, and as I always remind you about planned development districts, if you are inclined to approve this at DDH, I strongly, strongly, strongly recommend that you proceed
Yes.
with the planned development district overlay, because while the developer is asking for that, that assures you that the density stays at what's reflected here as opposed to the five units an acre, so a lot of developers have been very staunch about doing things this way, that does give you assurance that the density won't be greater than this, or it has to come back through and get reapproved.
I think Max brings up a good point, I think it's the final build out of Mem's Trail, and I'm certain, I think I can support it myself.
Anyone else?
Tommy, Max, I agree with you guys, if this was out by itself, and it was a brand-new neighborhood, and we were going to be delivering all of our services to them, I would look at this differently, but the fact that it's less dense than everything around it, and we're already providing services, we know that we can continue to provide those services, I'm comfortable moving ahead. Okay, Lindsey, with the roll call.
Koblins?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold?
No, ma'am.
Harmon?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Witten?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
All right, we'll move to the next agenda item. Item 9B2 is a request to apply the planned development district designation to approximately 65.28 acres of property in the Development District Housing Zone located at the southern extension of Mem's Trail subdivision. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its May 9 meeting, unanimous consent is necessary, and a public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second. Have a motion to second, seeing one of the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening. All right, seeing a hearing now, we'll open the public hearing, if you'd like to address the city council on this topic, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes to speak to the council. Close the public hearing, any comments or questions from the council?
Well, I think it's important that we look to approve this so that we do secure the density at 2.4 and not 5.5, which is what is in line with what is already in Mem's Trail, the other division, subdivisions.
Anyone else?
I agree, Ms. Witten.
Okay, Lindsey?
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold? Yes, ma'am.
Harmon?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Koblins?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
All right, bear with me on this item, we have to go through all of them individually because they involve different subdivisions, so item 9C1 establishes two stop signs for Farmville Lakes Phase Two and Six, unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second. Have a motion to second, seeing one of the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening. Okay, any comments or questions? All right, Lindsey with the roll call.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Koblins?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Anderson?
Yes.
Item 9C2 establishes one stop sign for Farmville Lakes Phase Eight, unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion to second, seeing one of the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening. Any comments or questions? Okay, Lindsey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Item 9C3 establishes two stop signs for the landings at Academy Phase Two, unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent. Second.
Have a motion to second, seeing one of the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening. All right, seeing a hearing now, any comments or questions? Okay, Lindsey for the roll call.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Koblins?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Harmon?
Yes, ma'am.
Anderson?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Harmon?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Harmon?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Under resolutions, item 10A authorizes a tax abatement for Leewa SCM Incorporated for the purchase of an existing manufacturing facility and new manufacturing machinery to be located at 136 Enterprise Drive in Auburn Technology Park South. The company anticipates hiring 18 new employees and investing approximately $3.35 million.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion to second, any comments or questions? Appreciate enthusiasm, chief, all right.
Getting rolling.
Congratulations to our industrial development team. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
Mayor, those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
Okay, at this time, we'll open the citizens' open forum, if you'd like to address the city council about anything on your mind, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes to speak to the city council, and please address all of your comments to the city council. Yes, sir?
Steve Cosgrove, 1927 Watercrest Drive, and again, one more time, I'd just like to express appreciation to all the leadership of Auburn, that's just a broad brush getting all of you, and all the staff of Auburn, because you just continually display the efforts and commitment and dedication to the well-being of Auburn, and I just, it's just amazing, and I really appreciate that. Had a really productive opportunity to meet with Allison Hall today and Houston Manning, one of her right-hand persons with Auburn Parks and Recreation, I really appreciate that, Allison, that was personable, it was professional, it was productive, and I really, really appreciate that. I did find out that perfection can be improved on, so I'm completely wide open to any ideas and suggestions and so forth, and that we need to do to improve on this right here. This is a mini-version of the four-foot by eight-foot display rendition that one day it may be displayed somewhere, somehow, but I just wanted to say thank you so much for that opportunity, Allison and Houston, that was very, very meaningful today, and thank you all, really appreciate you all a lot, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cosgrove. Who'll be next?
My name is Robert Wilkins, 261 Denson Drive, Auburn, Alabama. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The lack of decorum. Would a business owner allow his employees to lose their decorum and keep their job? I can pick up guidelines for the citizen decorum at the door at each city council meeting, but when will the council and its mayor have the decorum guidelines? Councilman Dawson continues to take my speech out of context, but one thing he continues to defend is his honor and the police force that he once was a part of. Well, I'm here to defend my honor. First, I did not attend the next two meetings after the April 2, 2024 meeting because of the lack of class shown by our mayor against an Auburn citizen, that's me, myself. Second, if I had attended those two meetings, my decorum would have been on the same caliber as Mayor Anderson, who has no guidelines to follow. I was called a liar in the public forum through these words concerning Auburn City Council salary increase that was voted on back on March 3, 2020 by the mayor and five other council members. In the mayor's own word at the April 2, 2024 council meeting, quote, "I want to correct something that was said earlier, I have never casted a vote that prevented this council from receiving a raise." I've never done that, but I don't let the truth, but don't let the truth get in the way of your narrative, Mr. Wilkins. As long as you keep repeating those things, someone will repeat them somewhere. So I assume if this quote is correct by you, Mayor, the Auburn Opelika News and the Auburn Villager on March the 4, 2020 publication, that they were liars. In that article, both those articles, city council members last received a raise in 2006, a resolution to increase the compensation of future city council members from $600 a month to $1,200 failed, with council members Dixon, Witten, and Taylor voting for the measure. Let me repeat again, Dixon, Witten, and Taylor. Mayor, it has not been because of your intense determination to pass ordinance 3288 short-term rental. For whatever reason, I would not be attending these council meetings. Instead, I would be at home taking care of my wife while doing my Airbnb, paying twice the amount in sales tax, the property tax that I pay, while causing no problems to my fellow neighborhood citizens. Thank you, Mayor.
Who'll be next? Okay, we'll close citizens' communications, anybody on the council have anything? Had an opportunity to have lunch today with United States Representative Mike Rogers, appreciate him coming through town and checking on everything that's going on with Auburn, we're certainly grateful for his support, he has assisted us with a number of projects in our community, whether it's the new communication lights, signs that we'll have on the interstate, a new water project, or our new ACDI building that is coming out of the ground as we speak. Representative Rogers has been a great asset to our community for many years, and it was great to have lunch with him today. Okay, anyone else? Yes, sir, Mr. Griswold.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to clarify something, according to state law, we don't have to have public comment except when a public hearing is required, is that true?
That is accurate, the citizens' communications you offer twice on your agenda are at the pleasure of the council and your council rules.
Yeah, and we added those two opportunities two councils ago, I believe it was.
In 2018.
Because prior to that, citizens only had an opportunity to speak once, and it was the end of a meeting after everything had been adjudicated or deliberated, so this council has gone out of its way to provide opportunities for the public to speak, things that, again, are not necessarily required by law, where I think we've done a good job on providing those opportunities, and I appreciate all of us up here, sitting around and listening to all these things, the opportunity for people to speak, we may not agree with what they have to say, but it's certainly an opportunity, and I'm glad that you all have taken advantage of it. And the second thing I'd like to clarify a little bit is, the STR ordinance has been litigated, I believe, three separate times now, at the city, at the county, and at the Alabama Supreme Court, and on all three occasions, the ruling was on, in behalf, or on behalf of the city of Auburn, that our short-term rental ordinance, as we know it, it remains. I don't believe there's any doubt about that, and it's been adjudicated three times in court environments. So again, I think that we've done a good job on implementing something, and again, we're more than happy to sit up here and listen to people complain about it, but the fact of the matter is, it's been through the court systems, and the ordinance has been ruled acceptable. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else?
I'd also like to say, I don't recall a time where you were against the city council getting a raise, I feel like that's unfair to the mayor, and you're correct about one thing, I will support the police every time, unless they're wrong, if they're wrong, then they got to be dealt with like anybody else, but I'm going to come down on the side of the police and I'll see something different, but it makes you feel better to get up here and low-rate me and go right ahead, because I've been low-rated by a lot better than you, probably, probably will in the future. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, is there a move to adjourn?
The move.
We're adjourned.